Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council's Legislative Meeting this evening. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zepone is absent.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have poetry at the podium, and it's Lynae Jants reading her poem Mercy Dogs. Welcome.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. The forecast hadn't hinted at rain, yet as my friend and I stepped from our cars, the darkness misted our bare arms. We followed her border collie, running down a ribbon of dust, leading us into the dark beyond the circle of my headlamp. Climbing into the old burn, charred snags grasped at blinking city lights nested along the river below. The tip of Rocco's tail bobbed white in the gloom. My friend told me it's called a shepherd's lantern. It used to lead the shepherd's home as darkness fell. Later, I learned that border collies also served in World War I. More than 50,000 dogs trained to bring first aid to wounded soldiers in no man's land, mercy dogs. Unfazed by constant gunfire, sometimes wearing gas masks, the dogs crawled through mud and thick brush, trenches strewn with the dying and the already dead. A gentle nose nudged into a cold hand, they bore packs of bandages and first aid. A soldier unable to help himself lost, a tatter of his uniform brought back to camp. One medic recalled the night pitch black, heavy fog. We called hunt the wounded, and the dogs dashed ahead into the woods. Fourteen wounded were found in the dark by our dogs, who could never have been found by our ambulance men and would have been left to their fate. You cannot picture the horror of it. A battlefield surgeon wrote, "They sometimes lead us to bodies we think have no life in them, but when we bring them back to the doctors, they always find a spark. It is purely a matter of their instinct, far more effective than man's reasoning powers." For the soldier fatally injured, impossible to save, the mercy dog would lay down at his side. Soft fur against his hand, the wounded soldier did not face death alone. He followed the shepherd's lantern, home.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have a proclamation by Councilmember Cathcart for Public Health Week.
Yeah, thank you. And I don't know if Dr. Thompson, Dr. Lascazza, you guys want to come down, whoever's presenting, if you want to come to the podium. It's my privilege to read this mayoral proclamation celebrating National Public Health Week. Whereas, the week of April 7 is the 30th National Public Health Week, and in the past 30 years, significant strides have led to many public health successes, including the following: One, deaths due to HIV/AIDS, which peaked in 1994, have dropped significantly, with antiretroviral therapy ensuring most people with HIV can live normal lifespans, and prevention tools like PREP significantly reduce transmission. Two, smoking rates, which were as high as 25.5% among U.S. adults in 1994, have now fallen to 11.4%. Three, childhood mortality, which was at a rate of 13.8 deaths per 1,000 live births in 1994, has now fallen to 5.4 deaths per 1,000 live births due to vaccines, better healthcare access, and nutrition. Four, lead poisoning, with 4.4% of U.S. children having elevated blood lead levels in 1994, has now fallen to less than 0.5% due to policies banning leaded gasoline and reducing lead in paint, pipes, and water systems. And whereas, a person's health status can differ drastically by ZIP code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, access to healthy foods, access to education, and access to healthcare. And whereas, public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, ranging from infectious disease, outbreaks, to natural disaster preparedness. Efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on promoting wellness. Now, therefore, I, Lisa Brown, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the people of Spokane, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7, 2025, as National Public Health Week.
And I just want to thank the City Council very much for proclaiming Public Health Week, April 7 through the 13th, as National Public Health Week. This is our 30th year of celebrating National Public Health Week, and I've been in public health for 25 years, so I've been in it for all but five of those years. And, you know, our theme is, "Public Health Starts Here," and each of you have one of these stickers at your place. And it's important to realize that, yes, we, as public health professionals, we are part of your community. We are in your community. We're your neighbors. We're your friends. We're everywhere, not only just in that odd-looking building over there. But the other thing is that you, as City Council members, you are so critical to public health. You think about policy, systems, and environmental change. That's what you do every day, and you help our communities to be healthy. And 99201 is the poorest ZIP code in Washington State, and the changes that you make here in the City of Spokane have an impact on our city, and it's so important, the work that you do. So, thank you for being a part of the public health community. Thank you. And before you leave, introduce yourself so our audience knows who you are. I am so sorry. I am Alicia Thompson, and I'm the Administrative Officer of the Spokane Regional Health District. Thank you, Alicia, so much. Moving on to boards and commission appointments, we have four before us tonight: Clark Tucker, Claudine Zinder, Daniel Powell, and Jared Sweeney Demas. Any council commentary on those?
Up with commentary.
On the boards and commissions? I haven't gone through.
Leave up a comment on the board and commission.
Okay, we have several public comments on boards and commissions, so we'll start with Tyrone Biggums. Next, Will Hughlings. Okay, and then Justin Haller, boards and commissions.
Hi, my name's Justin Haller, District 1. I ride about 3,000 to 5,000 miles a year. I applied to be on the Parks, or, sorry, not the Parks, Bicycle Board. So did my buddy Will, who actually rides also, and I've seen him downtown riding, as I see very few other people ride, that claim to ride. And I think it's a stacked deck. I don't know what kind of process there is, but for Lisa Brown to appoint four board members on the Bicycle Advisory Board seems like a stacked deck. It seems like collusion to me. I don't know if there's a real process, or if it's how it's selected, but I would like to see their Strava app, or see their odometer on their bicycle, and see how many miles they actually ride, and see if they actually ride in the community, versus just having these decisions on high from people who don't ride. Like, for instance, in District 3, on Ash Street, it's filled with debris. Anyone who rides a lot would know that, but people who don't ride wouldn't know that. And it's just very frustrating that Hamilton Street Bridge is filled with icebergs, so is the Children of the Corn Trail, as most people call it. Sorry if that offends certain people, but it's a joke. Take a joke. You know? It's just a joke. And if you're going to say something, say it to my face. Don't wait till I go to a bathroom break, and then I leave, and then you say something. Say it to my face. I can take it. So, I just, I'm very frustrated with Lisa Brown's seemingly autonomy with these decisions. I'd like to have more outreach from the public, and for her to have her "yes people," for lack of a better phrase, appoint people, it's scary.
Thank you, Justin. Any council com? Yes, Councilmember Navarrete.
Yeah, just to clarify that, on that event, it happened that Mr. Haller went to the restroom, and I made that comment, and I stand by it, that it is an offensive word, and you got something with us, we're here, but don't offend the Native American people.
Thank, uh, thank, Justin. Thank you. No response. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I just want to say, I do echo a little bit of what Justin just said there. I liked a lot of the people who applied for this board. I think that they'll do a fine job, and, you know, as Councilmembers Zepone and I were discussing it, I thought he made a fair point that sometimes an outside perspective is a good thing. I was, I was a little concerned, though, that, like, the person who's been here the longest, you know, got here three years ago, and we do have people here who ride bikes pretty religiously all throughout the winter time, and I wish we would have seen one of them nominated as well. And so, for me, I'm going to probably vote no tonight, not because I disagree with any of them, but I, I think it's fine to have outside perspective. I don't think it should be so heavy with the outside perspective.
Councilmember Klitschke.
I actually thought that it was a good mix of folks, and one of them did say he's been here for 32 years, I believe, so I'm not sure about that. But there were folks that had different opinions about the state of our bicycle infrastructure right now, some who thought it was amazing already as it is, and some who thought it had a long way to go. And I think it's, it's good to have a mix of folks in the room that know what we're doing well, but also have other references that they can compare us to, and ways that we can improve. So, I will be supporting this slate of candidates.
Councilmember Bingle, is your hand still up, or do you want to speak again?
I dropped it, brought it back up, yeah. Councilwoman Klitschke is correct. I apologize, there was one who'd been here for a long time, so I want to, I want to correct that. And, yeah, just to reiterate, I don't think outside perspective is a bad thing. I think that there's a lot of value in that. It just feels heavy of the four, being supported, three have come here in the last three years. That feels a little heavy to me, when we have, you know, local candidates that could also be a part, so.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the Board and Commissions for the Bicycle Advisory Board, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nos.
No.
Abstentions? I pass this. Thank you much. Ms. Fister.
We're on the consent agenda.
Just one moment. We're going to take public comment on the consent agenda, and we're going to start with Derek Azaro.
This is on the mayor's report. $157,507 for Catholic charities. I'll give you some numbers. $39.7 million revenue. $3,87,321, that's their net income. Executive compensation, $1,375,710. There's four chiefs, five vice presidents, one CFO. They each average $135,741 in payroll. Robert McCann, $286,568 is his annual salary. Jonathan Mallahan, $227,942. Board members get paid nothing. I don't know why you're giving them $157,000 when they have $3 million left over as their net profit. They own 34 properties in this community. Of those properties, they don't pay any income taxes, or, excuse me, property taxes, contributing to the city itself, but you're paying them every week to support their cause. The only people of benefit I see overall, the top-notch, is the people at the top. Those salaries, I'm not sure exactly what the mayor gets paid, I think it's less than $200,000. But you can see the numbers that are here, they have $3,807,000. This is off their income tax, by the way, filing. This is not hearsay. So, you continue to give them all this money. They're running the biggest landlord operation in this city at 34 properties. If I was an investor to come to this city to build buildings, to build apartment buildings, that's who I'm up against. I'm up against a nonprofit that's running, basically, a corporate structure of rentals, with, they don't pay any taxes. How is that fair? How is that fair to the property owners in this town? They're now bearing the cost of running the city itself. It's not fair to the property, people paying property taxes. This is why a lot of people are selling their property and leaving town because of your high taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Haller?
Justin Haller, District 1. Are we going to lump into the CPRs and the OPRs together, or are we going to do those separate?
We're doing the consent agenda. We have not started the resolutions.
So CPRs?
Yes.
Okay. I echo the thoughts of Derek. I'm sick of seeing nonprofits profit off of poor people and keep importing them. Every time a low-income building gets opened, another crop of homeless people come in. I'm here to talk about the 002, the $12,812,000 for parks and libraries. Why are we still lumping the parks and libraries together? Can we separate those? Can we go line by line and figure out what's going on? Because I don't think we should be spending that much money for homeless people to hang out in the summer or in the winter, in the shade or the sun, by these buildings, and smell up the libraries in the summer, and be vagrants during the winter. And I don't think we should have green grass for people to defecate and miterate upon while shooting up their drugs. I just don't see the benefit. I don't know why we have such pristine grass for such horrible behavior to happen on. Furthermore, regarding taxes, you guys have a .9% property tax versus .88 statewide. You have a 9% sale tax versus 6.5 statewide, and I don't see the benefit. Where's the benefit? Where are the police on the streets? Where's the lower crime? Where are the potholes being fixed? You tax us to death. You keep raising taxes, driving old people out of their houses that they can't afford to pay. You drive up rents because landlords are going to pass that on, and renters have nowhere to go, and so then they go to a low-income crack den run by Rob, because that's their only option.
Thank you, Justin.
For a guy who doesn't pay property taxes, that's horrible.
Thank you, Justin, for your comments. Any council commentary on the consent agenda? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just really quick, I would just say one thing in response to what Justin just said. The council doesn't necessarily control the operations of the library, although we do control some budget strings, and there's some things we could be leveraging. But the Board of Trustees do help oversee those, and so a great place to maybe provide some input would be at the Board of Trustee meetings of the Library Board.
Councilmember Dillon.
I'll just add, there's some really good things in tonight's consent agenda I'm happy to support, such as the Thorpe Tunnel study, looking at some alternatives to analysis for the infrastructure challenges in Latah, as well as the amendment for Career Path Employment Training, Career Path Services, as part of the Clean and Safe Program downtown.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any nos, abstentions? The consent agenda is passed. Ms. Fister.
Resolution 2025-0021, setting hearing before City Council for April 28, 2025, for vacation of Latah Place between Inland Empire Way and Union Pacific Railroad, as requested by adjacent property owners.
Council President. There's one person signed up for many of our resolutions and ordinances tonight, Tyrone. I'm just going to check one more time to see if they're online or in the House.
All right, thank you. Eldon Brown is here, if there was any other, council, any other information? All right, prepare to vote. Thank you. Councilmember Bingle?
Aye, sorry, I was having some technical problems here.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 2025-2022, establishing the Plan Commission Work Program for 2025, 2026.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Aye.
Ordinance C 36647, recodifying a section relating to animals into the correct chapter, repealing SMC Chapter 10.24 and Section SMC 10.24.060, and adopting new Section 10.74.075 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Aye.
Ordinance C 36648, relating to mechanical newspaper dispensers, repealing Section 8.02.0212 and Chapter 10.38 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Just clarity, I didn't know what that was. They're the old newspapers where you used to put 25 cents in, and you open them up. We regulated everything. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36649, relating to the Purchasing and Contracts, Department and Director of Purchasing and Contracts, amending Sections 3.01A, 3.15, 7.06, 020, 0.030, 0.035, 0.097, 1.155, 1.160, 1.170, 1.173, 1.190, 200, 220, 270, 290, 310, and 330 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36651, consolidating the General Business License and Regulatory Business License Codes into a single code section, clarifying licensing requirements under state law, eliminating conflicting and duplicative code and regulatory requirements, repealing SMC Chapter 4.04 and SMC Sections 8.01, 025, 1.10, 1.130, 200, 210, 230, and 320, adopting a new SMC Section 8.01, 321, amending SMC Sections 8.01, 020, 0.070, 0.090, 1.120, 1.150, 1.160, and 220 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36652, correcting municipal code references resulting from the streamlining of general business and regulatory licensing processes and procedures, amending Sections 10.23A, 010, 020, 070, 10.25, 010, 10.26, 010, 10.26, 070, 10.29, 010, 0.020, 0.031, 0.060, 0.070, 10.39, 070, 10.40, 010, 10.40, 025, 10.41, 010, 10.41, 040, 10.42, 030, 10.51, 020, 1.110, 1.130, 10.51, 5.060, 10.52, 030, 10.55, 020, and 17C, 316, 050, repealing Sections 10.23A, 075, 10.28, 020, and 10.40, 020 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36653, relating to the Public Ways and Property, adopting new Sections 12.13, 12.13, 010, 020, 030, 040, 050, 060, 070, 080, 090, 100, 110, 200, 210, 220, 230, 240, and 250 to Chapter 12 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36654, relating to Utility Cost Recovery Methods, repealing SMC 13.03, 070, 070, 4, 070, 6, 070, 8, 0710, and 0712 to Chapter 13.03, amending 13.08, 010, and 13.08, 020 to Chapter 13.08, and adding new SMC Sections 13.08, 200, 210, 220, 230, 240, 250, 300, 310, 320, 330, 340, 350, and 360 to Chapter 13.08 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36641, relating to the Mid-Biennial Review Process, amending Sections 7.01, 020, 7.14, 010, and 7.14, 030 of the Spokane Municipal Code, repealing Section 7.14, 040 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I just want to say, well done to, you know, Councilmember Cathcart, and good additions by Councilmember Dillon and Council President. I think this is going to be a good thing for the city, so thank you all for your hard work on this one.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart, Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, just same thing, want to thank Councilmembers Dillon and Council President Wilkerson for the assist in making a few, I think, needed changes, and appreciate that, and look forward to voting aye.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I think this got us to a really good place. Really appreciate, too, the kind of additional opportunities that will provide some more transparency, council being able to outline what are some of their budget priorities by resolution. Looking forward to getting council feedback on that as well. It does really provide, I think, a much better process, as well as putting in code some things from our council office, as our amazing budget liaison, to be part of that process.
Excellent. I echo all the above. I really appreciate the collaboration and the compromise that got us to this point. Prepare to vote.
Aye.
The solution, finish what we've started. And pretty much my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Justin?
Justin Haller, District One. I'm all in favor of getting the North-South Freeway done quick, efficiently, and on time and under budget, if that's even possible with government wastes. I'm conflicted as far as the tie to the $200 million project on Ruby/Division. I don't think it should be tied to that. I think it should be independent, and I think the Ruby $200 million for that project is just a waste of money, and especially when you can't ride three, four months out of the year with icebergs and debris and stuff. But the North-South Freeway is, could be a thoroughfare for truckers, getting the big rigs off the streets when they go to Deer Park or other areas up north. It would alleviate some traffic to some degree. I don't know how much. I don't know the studies. But there has been more progress since my dad moved in '02 than there ever has been. And it's impressive to see that something's going on, and I urge all of you to encourage the expansion versus having it go over budget and drag out forever. I'm sick of these projects being dragged out, like, just, you know, outside here. Why couldn't they finish that the right way the first time instead of having to redo it and redo it and redo it? It's just, it's very inefficient. And it was fully funded at one point years ago, back when I was born-ish, I don't know. But, you know, my grandpa was born in Everett, and he complained about it not being built. That was, my grandpa's older than me by a bit, you know? And so if he knew about it and talked about it, then chances are, multi-generations of people are expecting this to happen, and you guys could be the winning party, not political, but just the winning, you know, council that says, yes, let's do this.
Thank you, Justin. Now, Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of this letter. You know, I wrote a resolution that we passed a couple of years ago in the last big budget. And excited that that was a 7-0 vote as well. This year, I testified in front of the Senate Committee on the importance of the funding for the North-South Corridor. You know, outside of the economic development, that's obviously there. You know, for folks who care about SDA and public transportation, all of the modeling for the Bus Rapid Transit on Division was done with, you know, the assumption that the North-South Corridor would be completed by then. And so those projects, you know, like it or not, they are coupled together. And so by not completing the North-South Corridor on time, you know, the BRT project on Division, you know, is, the modeling will be off. But I think, more than anything, I think it's just really important to go to the, you know, to the parking lot of SCC to just see this giant ending, right? And just say, you know, what are we actually going to do with this? Are we genuinely, as a state, going to say this is the best that we can do and allow this, you know, bridge to nowhere to exist where it just falls off? And it also cannot be forgotten what the neighborhood has already gone through. East Central was already bifurcated once when I-90 came through. I think that East Central and different parts of our town deserve a completed freeway to show that we have learned from the mistakes of the past. And if we don't, if we choose to delay on the funding five, six years, I think it is just a massive physical reminder of the injustice that has happened to different parts of this town. And if it's not completed on time, it would be a massive reminder that we haven't learned anything from the past.
Thank you. You have a council commentary? Councilmember Dillon?
I think, I'll just echo that. I think a picture says a thousand words. I do appreciate this letter, not, you know, mitigate that, but the image, I think, of the unfinished freeway above SCC, that's something that should be, you know, shown to all lawmakers because it would be, I think, a symbol of failure. And this is something, there's a lot of momentum behind it. You know, we've been, I mean, this has been in the works, 1946, I believe, is when it was first introduced, so we're getting close on, what are, 80 years now? So it's time. I think the momentum's there, and let's finish this thing.
Councilmember Navarroate?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Cathcart, for that letter. Being a resident at East Central for 37 years, I saw and went through the purchase of our first family home in 2003 with the hopes that they were going to build the freeway in a few years. 22 years later, it's still empty. I often walk by our first home, and it's devastating, not only our first home, but all the, the whole block and blocks of East Central that disappeared. So hopefully, this letter will speedy things up and get some homes back on that lot.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingle, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to piggyback off of something Councilmember Dillon said, because sometimes it's hard to imagine when you're thinking of timeframes, right? But first proposed in, like, 1946. Keep in mind, that's the end of World War II. That's a year after World War II ended. Just to put that into context for people when you think, how long has it been? That was the end of World War II.
Thank you. Well, I too echo, and thank Councilmember Cathcart for taking the lead. I did share that Councilmember Klitsky, Councilmember Zepone, and myself had been in Olympia talking with Senator Leas and Representative Fai and Senator King in support of the North-South Freeway. Our local, Senator Ruchelli, Representative Hill, Representative Ornsby at the Town Hall, we leaned in pretty heavily. Councilmember Cathcart was there to take the charge on that. So I know that our representatives here on this side know how important it is. I want to encourage all our businesses to lean in and support and reach out to our electors as well, how important the North-South Freeway is to be completed. It is critical for neighborhoods, for economic development, for all the things that have been said. If not now, when? And not only for the '25, '27, but for the '27, '29 by any M. Let's make sure that funding is made available.
Councilmember Bingle, do you have another comment?
One last thing that just popped into my mind here is that it's critical for Washdaw and the state to remember as well, the amount of housing that was torn down for this project and the amount of housing that cannot be built until this project is completed. And until it's completed, they really hold that land hostage. So if it's going to be something where this project does get delayed, then I think we must demand that they release that land sooner rather than later because that is available land where we can be partnering with nonprofits or different developers to be building affordable housing here in the city of Spokane. And I cannot overstate that point, how important it is that they're holding that land hostage with pushing this completion date back.
Councilmember Cathcart?
One last comment from me. I, the way that it's currently being framed, if this were to get pushed off, there really is no actual date. And I, as I said earlier, I think material costs are going to go up. I think the overall cost of this project will increase. And my deep-seated fear is that if this is delayed, what will end up happening is we'll probably get a connection, and that connection will be at Trent, and that will probably be where this will stop. I really fear that it will never make its way to I-90, just for many reasons, cost being the primary driver there. And so for those reasons, it's all the more important that we push, push, push now and get this thing done.
And to Councilmember Bingle's comment, Representative Fai has a bill, I believe it's 1774, which is pushing Washdaw to establish a process in how to release those lands that are not being utilized. That has been the challenge. There was no process, and you know how the state is. So please monitor that and be in support of that as well. Everybody's prepared to vote?
Aye.
Thank you all. That concludes our legislative agenda. We are now transitioning to open forum.
Council President?
Yes.
I apologize. My wife is very ill, and so I'm going to go home and be with her, but I'm going to listen in on open forum on my way out.
Absolutely. I know there's a lot going on tonight. Thank you very much. Again, you have two minutes to speak. No clapping, booing, profanity. And let's start with Brad Barnett. Is Brad Barnett in the house? Welcome, Brad.
So no applause as I walk up. Good evening, honorable members of the City Council. My name is Brad Barnett. I'm the new president of the Spokane Business Association. I have escaped the Texas heat after being exiled there for 35 years. It's good to be back around mountains. You have a beautiful community, and the two weeks I've been here, just that, how gracious everyone has been, has been amazing. So I want to just reach out. I've left some business cards up there. I will be reaching out. I want to get a chance to know each one of you, what your passion is for our community, and what the SBA can do to help make that a reality. We want to make this the best place to live and do business in the state and in the nation. And while we have challenges ahead of us, we've got a great community that has the resources to really make life better for every person that lives here. So just kind of that introduction, and, oh, good evening.
Thank you, Brad, and welcome to Spokane. It is a beautiful place to live, and I tell people all the time, I love Spokane. Next, Raoul Peña and Derek Azaro.
Raoul Peña, District One. Earlier, I heard that if you asked the council to come and visit your neighborhood, that you would be more than happy to come and visit. Now, is that a different meeting? I seem to recall echoing the same words with no results. But, you know, it is what it is, and to my disappointment, I come here, and I come, and I ask, and I plead. The only thing I give a really rat's tutu about is kids' safety. Hamilton is a freeway. You don't need a $50 billion bridge. They're already hauling doodoo down to Hamilton. There's no lights for the kids to cross. It'd be nice, instead of putting everything on the South Hill, to put a blinking light on Jackson and Hamilton where kids can press that button, and the light would come on, and they could safely walk across to go to school. It'd be nice if you all spent $3,000 of $500,000, $7,000,000 you give Catholic charities to put a light in, to put crosswalks in, for kids' safety. Y'all can agree, and hey, let's give it to Catholic charities. But District One, don't let it hold money.
Thank you. Derek? And after Derek, Will Hewings and Tyler Tumush.
Okay.
My grandson's on spring break. He's learning government. Derek Azaro, supporting District One. I talked to you guys at the Town Hall meeting about the danger of speeding around schoolgrounds. What a coincidence, tonight I'm talking. This morning, I saw on the news, your next-door neighbor in Post Falls, it actually happened. A girl got run over by a driver that ran. 11-year-old girl gets run over, head injury, leg injury. And the PD over there voluntarily said that after spring break, they would be patrolling those areas. Here I am, coming here, for how long, talking about safety for the kids in our neighborhood? I talked about asking the chief at the council meeting, the Town Hall. I said, can you have officers start patrolling the schools? The highest school with the most zones is in Dillon's neighborhood. 491 tickets up there repeatedly. And that's only during the wintertime, January and February. So I think it's high time this council starts talking about actual school safety, the kids walking around the schools. And I do feel this PD is only going to give up a couple hours a day here and there to go to the schools at the high, right now, at the highest points, and give out those tickets and slow people down. Now, we're lucky so far it hasn't happened in Spokane, but it did happen in Post Falls in the past few days. And that mother's on there saying the same thing I'm saying. She sees they have the signs over there, slow down, and the people, the parents, everybody's speeding through there. What started me on this path for safety for kids in this town is my grandson went to Logan M. Entry School, and that's what started me on the path of protecting the kids in our neighborhood. And I think I speak for almost every parent, every grandparent in this city, I hope, that agrees with me to support Prop 1, no camping around schools, period. No argument, no discussion. It's not up to the mayor to decide what she's going to support.
Thank you, Derek. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Will Hewings, then Tony Edwards, and then Sandy Nichols.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown. Lisa Brown, are you kidding me right now? Spokane is falling apart. Crime is out of control. Fentanyl is everywhere. And downtown is a disaster zone. And you think wasting taxpayer money on sports fields is the priority? What we need is a new jail, an actual functioning shelter system, and real law and order to clean up this city. But no, instead of dealing with the real crisis, you're throwing money at pet projects that do nothing to fix Spokane's nightmare. I live downtown, just blocks from City Hall, and let me tell you, it's a war zone. Homeless addicts, openly smoking fentanyl, people overdosing on the street, crime is rampant, and filth is everywhere. Where are you? Certainly not dealing with the mess you and your failed policies have created. Spokane is an absolute embarrassment, especially since we have these tournaments, you know? It's just like, go walk over by mine. When you leave tonight, Betsy, why don't you go drive over by the Rid Path and see what it looks like? And you'll see that Will's just not, you know, just, you know. So, but, like I said, you are hands down the worst mayor Spokane has ever had, at least since I've lived in Spokane. And I just want to remind her, there's a mayor called Shang Thau, a former mayor that got recalled December last year for the same things that are happening here in our city. She was the mayor of Oakland, California. So you can look that up. But that's all, you know, a lot of people are really fed up with her. And obviously, you know who I'm, what I'm about. So, yeah, she needs to do something.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Tony Edwards, and then Sandy Nichols.
Tony Ed, excuse me, Tony Edwards, Spokane Valley. And I'm a representative for the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters, Spokane Local 59. I'd first like to start by saying thank you for your support on 395. That's a really big deal for us, as you can imagine, and 2029 would be pretty awesome to get that thing done by then. I've heard a lot of discussion about taxes, about revenue income, getting things funded, and that's exactly what I'm here to speak about tonight. I'm here to speak about the construction tax fraud that is, it's rampant everywhere. And this April 12 through the 18th, the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters is standing up to tax fraud as a part of Tax Fraud Days of Action. Contractors, cheating contractors, misclassify, pay off the books, and cheat taxpayers, taking money away from education, infrastructure, fire departments, and police departments. Money that could be used for officers, firefighters, and the equipment that they need to do their job safely. A couple of examples here locally, La Riviera from Idaho, misclassified their workers on the Hamilton Street Project, and were underpaying their workers, robbing the city and the community of income. JR Drywall, doing the same thing. No overtime pay, no license, no insurance, no bond, no PTO, no Long-Term Care Act, no LNI.
And thank you, Tony. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Sandy? And after Sandy, Will Quinn. Come on down, Sandy.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sandy Nichols, and I'm disgusted that after three years, I have to be back here again. I'm here because Catholic Charities is insisting on turning my neighborhood into a dystopian sewer that nobody can ever get rid of like they do every day downtown around the House of Charity. They ambushed us with Catalyst 1 three years ago, and now they're going to try and ambush us with Catalyst 2, which looks very much like the House of Charities replacement that everyone's been begging for for years. They're building a whole new low-barrier shelter with rooms, rooms for 130 residents, and if that isn't bad enough, they want to put 50 tiny homes next to it. This sounds like the House of Charities combined with Camp Hope, all put together in my neighborhood next to an existing shelter that we didn't want in the first place. Enough is enough. West Hills has already got more shelters and facilities from Catholic charities than any other residential neighborhood in town. But hey, what do they care? These shelter zealots could care less about what happens to the neighborhood they're in. Look at downtown. There's only two reasons that it's such a mess down there, and one is the Catholic Charities is incapable of cleaning it up, or number two, they simply don't care. And we don't want, we don't want that in our neighborhood any more than you wanted it downtown. Let's be clear, they're getting kicked out of downtown because of the mess they've made, but frankly, they don't care what kind of shelter they build, where they put it, or what it does to the neighborhood they're in. You know, Rob McCann predicted that there would be so much crime in the neighborhood when he opened Catalyst 1 that it had to look like a special forces outpost with 10-foot-high fences, facial recognition cameras, and armed guards patrolling the perimeter. That is how much crime he thought he was going to bring. Yeah, that's just what everybody wants in their neighborhood. Well, Catholic Charities is trying to cram another shelter down our throats, and we're not having it. They can put their monstrous congregate shelters somewhere else. We've done our part. We've done enough. Go put your shelters somewhere else, Catholic Charities.
Thank you, Sandy. Will Quinn, and then Michaela Blair.
Will Quinn, soon to be an ex-mom-and-pop landlord. This is day 20 of disaster recovery, a continuing saga. I've been advised that my presence at these proceedings clothed in work attire would be subject to both cruel and unusual punishment. Therefore, here I am, dressed this way. Last week, I stated that our one- and two-bedroom apartments are priced $300 under the market rate. I, however, neglected to mention that we only raise rents after a tenant move out. Never before. We also respond promptly to tenants' concerns when problems arise. But alas, our five- and seven-unit apartment buildings will go to market in three to four weeks. Now, the backstory to a destroyed two-bedroom, one-bath apartment, to which I just completed my 20th straight day of work. This is dedicated to Spokane's own Pied Piper for tenant advocacy, Terry Anderson. Tenants notified the property manager that they would like to move and had someone to assume their lease, and that person would be in touch. This is a process we have allowed, and to date, I've never experienced a problem. But we never heard another word until another of our tenants called on March 7 to notify us that said tenants appeared to have moved out on the 1st but had left two bikes on the balcony and a bunk bed in a bedroom window, given the appearance that they were still living there. We were able to ascertain that they had indeed moved out, and without giving notice, I had been charging these tenants $225 less for the same apartment, one floor above.
Thank you, Will. Your time is up. I look forward to the continuation.
Betsy, Betsy. This is going to go on forever, Betsy.
Michaela Blair, and then Christine Quinn. You're coming together? I'm sorry.
Oh, no. I was going to say before, because I was going to...
Is that fine with Michaela? Okay. Well, then Christine Quinn, and then Michaela Blair.
So I'm Christine Quinn from Spokane, and I'm here tonight as a mother, a grandmother, and someone working every day to help our city confront the fentanyl crisis. Two weeks ago, Katara lost her son, as you all know. Michaela and I sat with her as she poured out her grief, and it's the kind of grief no mother should ever have to endure. Raw, unbearable heartbreak of losing your child, of knowing they're never coming home again. What I didn't realize in that moment, Michaela was writing. She'd taken it all in quietly and deeply. Later, I found something she'd written under her bed. When I asked her about it, she told me she wrote it when we were sitting with Katara. And that's what she's going to read tonight. Her words come from a place of deep feeling, unfiltered, honest and true, and she's going to share them with you.
Thank you. Michaela, welcome.
I'm Michaela, and honestly, what people need to understand is what fentanyl could mentally and physically do to people. Think of it this way, if fentanyl was a person, we would hunt them down until the end of time because he or she would be, and is, murdering people and taking their lives every second of the day. We've talked to multiple people about this so many times, so many times, because every time we talk, they end up ignoring us. They do not really care and never take it to heart. The only time they will care is when it happens to someone they love. So they don't care until it's fully gone from their own lives and when their own life is affected, when a crisis happens to them.
Thank you. Next is Justin Haller, and then Eugene Knowles.
Boy, do I have a lot of opinions. Got to get them out as fast as possible. Justin Haller, District One. First and foremost, instead of reading poetry, can we read the names of the people who are overdose victims? And not all of you are in attendance, unfortunately, but I ask this question anyway. Will any of you, by a show of hands, condemn the vandalism to Teslas? Any of you condemn the vandalism by a show of hands? None of you will condemn the vandalism of Teslas by a show of hands? Let the record state that. Okay. None of you will condemn the Tesla vandalism? That's good to know. By a show of hands, you would not do that. Can we hold the NGOs accountable? Because Jewel Stanley Hands, convicted embezzler, and her husband's a convicted embezzler, she was accused, and she gave back the money when she was, when she found out that she was caught. The other thing I wanted to ask is, with the electric cars that we're buying, with the current fires that are happening and the vandalism, are insurance rates going up on these cars? Are we paying more for insurance on the electric cars? Just, you know, something to think about, considering it's our money that you steal from us and misappropriate on a constant basis. I also want to say, if you could mention to the Senate, because I don't have a big voice, but you have a bigger voice than I do. I don't want any new taxes. The Senate Bill 5798 is going to be debilitating for taxpayers, and it's horrible. You guys don't do anything really efficiently with the money that you take. $970,000 for bike lane equipment and staffing, I haven't seen them cleared yet. Like I said before, Ash isn't cleared, Hamilton Street Bridge wasn't cleared, it was filled with ice days after it snowed. What do you do with the money you already steal? Boom, out.
Thank you, Justin. Eugene? Eugene?
Eugene Knowles, I've been here in Spokane since 2010. I got three points here. The choice between a turnaround specialist and the continuing use of the city staff to solve the homeless crisis. Now, it, it started back with Mayor Condon and then we moved to the next administration and the current administration. Using city staff just has not gotten the job done. Now, here's the three things, this is part two. Here's the three things that all of us do. This is the city of Spokane's problem, not just the administration's. Here's the three things we all do. The people in the center use their eyes, not their hands. Now, here's how they use their eyes. They turn a blind eye to what's going on. They turn a discerning eye to what's going on. And can I, oh, an astonished eye to what's going on. And then what they do is either they do nothing or they do something. Now, I'm not going to tell you how they do something because time's short. The people on the far left hold all these meetings about the problems in the city, especially homeless. And their job or their activity is talk. There's no action. The people on the far right, they want to use force. Force these people into treatment, force these people into facility, into jails. Now, the third one, if I haven't lost it here, is the most important. Five crises. Number one is the health crisis, which includes fentanyl, that's the worst one. The ref, street refugee crisis, the camping crisis, the shelter crisis, and the homeless crisis. This is going up. All of them are different and they try to solve them all in the same, same way. You need a turnaround specialist, not the city staff.
Thank you, Eugene. Thank you all. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Next week on April the 7th, there will be no city council, as that is spring break. We will see you all back here on April the 14th. This meeting is adjourned.